Meeting is December 12th, 2023, 6:30 PM. Let's all rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can guys ask you for just five mi- oh, two minutes of silence for Ray, as they all he died on December 4th, was a great member of our community. He was the president of the Chippens, the food pantry. He was involved in Ray's foundation. He also was in Alt Home Day comedy and many, many other things that he was involved. We are, we lost a great soul and he was selfless man. And I was very honored to, to meet him and know him and call him my friend. So let's, this will that.
Yeah, let's set, alright. First, the minutes. Okay, so let's go on up the minutes for regular meeting on November 28th.
Motion.
motion.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Community relations announcements and open forum. And do we have anybody for open forum?
You do the announcement first, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Alright. Good evening, December 12th here. Announcements for the Board of Selectmen meeting. Town Hall will be closed Monday, December 25th, 2023, and Monday, January 1st, 2024, for the holidays. The fire department will have their state, uh, Santa Parade townwide Sunday, December 17th, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The holiday concert at Charlton Public Library. Celebrate the season with Charlton Public Library on Thursday, December 14th, at 6:00 PM in the main floor in front of the Christmas tree for our annual Cool Yule Holiday Recital, featuring our very own Charlton Ukulele Acoustic Ensemble. Come and sing along or just listen. Light refreshments to be provided by the Friends of Charlton Library. No registration is required, all are welcome. Charlton Public Library is located on, at 40 Main Street in Charlton, Massachusetts. Please note additional parking is available across the street from the library at Town Hall. 2024 dog license will be available starting December 18th in the town clerk's office, online, or through the mail. See the town clerk's page for further information. There will be a special state election to fill the vacancy caused by the resignation of Peter Durant in the 6th Worcester representative, representative district. This election is only for precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4A. Nomination papers and instructions are available in the town clerk's office and are due back by 5:00 PM, December 26th. The primary for this election will be held Tuesday, February 6th, at Heritage School from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. There will be no early voting for this election. The special state election for this seat will be held on the same day as the presidential primary, Tuesday, March 5th, at the Heritage School from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Please note, there will be early voting for the presidential primary, but not for the special election per state requirements. Any questions, call the town clerk's office.
If you would all just humor me. So this is not my backpack, it's a backpack to be given away to a homeless person. It is getting cold outside and unfortunately, there are a lot of people out there who are not, let's just say, as well off or the benefits of a home and a warm place to sleep and dry socks. So several members of my family generally throughout the year will carry bags like this in their car. And when they see someone in the city, they'll give it to them. This year, we thought it might be nice to put out the request to everyone in Charlton. If there's anyone here who might want to join us by creating a go-bag like this. It needs to be a new backpack and things that are in it all need to be new. This is filled with non-perishable, uh, food, like crackers, bottles of water, dry socks, pair of knit gloves and knit beanie, things that someone might need to stay warm. And I've already been in contact with both Abby's house in Worcester, also Worcester Social Services, who've agreed. They're just opening their shelter tomorrow for the winter, the seasonal shelter. They will take any bags that we can create and deliver to the social services. And the city will distribute them to homeless who need them. So if there's anyone in Charlton who would like to create a go-bag like this to be distributed to homeless in need, sorry, Mary, but I'm going to ask that they drop them off between now and January 2nd in the selectmen's office where we will collect them and we will deliver them to the city, who will handle distribution. So thank you for your consideration. And anyone who may want to help, it would be greatly appreciated.
Very good.
Okay, moving on. Open forum, do we have anybody on the TV now?
Nope.
I, I have a question actually, and if, and if I have it, I would think people at home might. And a town clerk isn't here, but. So this election is for precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4A?
I don't count, so I, yes, it doesn't affect me.
Well, but yeah, but there was always, I'm in 4.
Right.
Am I now in 4A?
You'll have to check specifically with the town clerk's office whether, which precinct that you're in. But 4 specifically is Representative Frost District. 4 is Representative Frost District, so that's why they're not eligible to vote in this election.
But what is 4A?
4A is a subset, sublet based off of the redistricting, uh, which occurred.
That's recent, that's my question.
Recent as of two years, uh, I believe, two years ago?
I was gonna say, it's been a couple of years. Yeah.
Yeah.
For anybody who is confused, check with the town clerk. Not with Steve.
Not with, not with me. I'm go- I'm going 4. I know where to go.
Appointments and resignations.
First is for the Boston Post Cane Committee. Attach as a talent bank form submitted by Sherri Russell, Council on Aging Director, seeking to be appointed to the Boston Post Cane Committee. There's one opening and the committee would recommend the appointment.
Motion.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Sherri here? Why, I should know, right? Because I see her every Tuesday morning. I see her right in front of me. Okay. Next.
Next is an appointment for the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Attach as a talent bank form submitted by Darcy Drummy, seeking to be appointed to the Open Space and Recreation Committee. I recommend the board make the appointment.
Motion.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Darcy? No, Darcy? Again, my Christmas wish list, if anybody who we appointing would be, you know, kind enough and come here in front of us and the people that are watching, they will be greatly appreciated. Moving on.
Alright, next is the appointment to the Fire Substation Committee for a fire department alternate. At the board's last bidding, it was recommended that we current, it was mentioned that we currently do not have an alternate for the fire depart, fire representative on the Fire Substation Committee. The board is asking to appoint Scott Corio, Deputy Chief, as the Fire Substation Committee Fire Department alternate. I recommend the board make the appointment.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you very much for coming in, greatly appreciate it.
Oh, in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, and finally is appointment of traffic constables, special municipal employees and special police officers. Attach is a request from Police Chief Dowd, asking the board to appoint the following pending background checks and medicals. Traffic Constables, Special Municipal Employees, David Porter, Douglas Raymond, Hunter Luby, Candido Diaz Jr., Kevin Fleming, and Giovanni Abella. Special Police Officers Patrick Ca- Kel- Cackley, sorry, Anastasios Karamankis, and Kevin Pejo. I would recommend the board make the appointment.
Excellent job, Andrew. Motion.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Andrew, good job with that.
Wow.
Yeah.
Got through it. Alright, finally, we had a resignation of a special police officer. Attach is a letter from Lattice Mattos, resigning her position as special police officer due to accepting a full-time position as a grafted police officer. The board should accept her resignation and a letter thanking her for your service is in your sign folder.
Motion with regret and congratulations, Lattice.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Regrettably. Scheduled appointments.
We're slightly ahead, but I think everybody's here already on that.
Is everybody here for Ruth? Or do you have whole audience?
This is the place to be, time for the record.
How wonderful.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Deborah Cheslock. I'm one of three members of the Boston Post Cane Committee. Along here tonight is Mary Devlin, Mary Carpenter, and Judith Mescal, who are present also. With the passing of our previous cane recipient, Howard B. Seifert Senior, the Charlton Boston Post Cane Committee met and reviewed the nomination submitted. We would ask the board to declare Ms. Ruth Duhamel, at the young age of 98, to be honored as the oldest citizen in the town of Charlton and ask that you present her with the wooden cane and replica and certificate. We will be ordering a plaque with her name and picture to hung, excuse me, to be hung next to the Boston Post Cane in the hallway. So.
Did anybody check the birth certificate?
She's telling a real age.
That was 70, right? Alright, so what if we do that? Do we go over there? Oh, are we all go?
Oh, you do thing. Yeah, yeah, everybody come up and like take pics and everything, like, like, you know, with the family. We're very informal here.
78 in Charlton. 20, uh, 98.
98, you, I was born and you were born here all this time?
Yes, it was your whole life.
Oh, no, let the family get him. There's no whacking people with that cane, Mr. Duhamel, just telling you right now. Great kids act up, great, great kids act up.
We can't make any problems.
Yeah, you can't use the cane.
One more.
Well, maybe one.
One more.
Oh. Lenny, go stand next to Mama. Go over there and stand next to Mama.
I want one too.
That's, this gentleman is.
Those are her two sons.
That's a nice pick.
Lenny, look up.
Oh, it's beautiful.
I want to have one too, can I have one too? My inspiration, that gives me 98 years.
Perfect, one, two, three.
Well done, Mr. Duhamel. Do you have any words of wisdom for a 50-year-old who probably die at 70? I'm curious, like, what? So no cigars and whiskey anymore, is that what you're telling them?
Bow in the roof, bow in the door. The hell is awful. Day by day. One day to the next.
Did Charlton change throughout the years a lot?
It's changed immensely. As far as the scenery goes, houses, what it was, all woodland. Lots of places like that go down the road. It's all, all, um, houses now that used to be done for woodland. But anyway, it makes for more, more, um, people to work for Charlton.
That's right. And celebrate you.
Yeah.
Do, 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 do you want to take a?
I'm still living with older.
Does she want to? Sounds like she's got more to say.
Thoughtful and helpful husband.
Very good.
All of his life, he was good to me. And, uh, but the only thing is, he died too young. He died in, um, when he was 68 years old.
Oh, that's.
Because of his heart.
Oh, you don't have one, so.
And the other thing I thought of was, I never had a bad illness.
If you guys don't mind, would you like to take a seat and talk into the microphone? It sounds like you have a lot you want to say. No, 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 we, the, the history is so much more important. It sounds like you have a lot you want to say, I didn't.
I can stand for a little longer.
I'm sure you can.
Oh, I never had a bad illness.
That's good.
To pull me down. I've always been in good health, so to speak. And, uh, it, it's been a big health that I never got into a big, uh, uh, that I had to, uh, oh, now I forget where I was going to say. I never had an illness that dragged me down and caused me to be not, less active and so forth. So. No, stop.
We'd like you to come back in 10 years and we'll give you another plaque.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an official motion to nominate or to approve the nomination of Ms. Duhamel as the Boston Cane recipient and also that we take care of the purchase of, of the plaque.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Well done, Ms. Duhamel. Well done, and to your beautiful family.
And congratulations, yeah. There are some things that we're able to do that we think are fun. This is probably right in the top two of that list. And thank you for 98 years and, and still, and still loving the town, and yep.
I went to school in this building, the 7th grade through the 12th.
We saw some, some of your graffiti in the bathroom. Yeah, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a fine for that coming. Something about a missing library book? Alright, I'm just saying. I didn't want to bring it up tonight, but like.
And then I used to work at the Charlton Elementary School for 22 years, uh, school secretary.
That's wonderful. Oh!
So those are the things that involved me with Charlton.
So that was the one down where McDonald's is now, that was, yeah, yeah. No.
No?
The one by the federated.
Oh.
What? Grill game.
The school by the federated, Grill game.
The Grill game road, that's where you work.
Yes.
Oh, it burned.
On Grill game road. Behind the church.
Was Beagle Club your place to go?
Excuse me?
Was Beagle Club your place to go for fun?
Huh? Did you go to the Beagle Club for fun?
Oh, no.
Did you hear clean living? That's all I heard. This goes back to that longevity question. She's not a miscreant like us.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. Duhamel.
It's great to have you here. Alright, moving on.
Oh, congratulations, that's so cool. Just do a little, do you, do you want a picture with, with the entire board? It's up to you. Would you like a picture with the entire board for posterity? I think the one you have with your family is fine, but.
Oh, sure.
Sure, let's, let's get a pic. Mary, help me out. You're, you're in this picture. Thanks, guys, thanks for doing.
Thank you very much.
Don't you hate that?
Yes.
Look around you like, oh, okay. Alright, no more happy news, let's start arguing. That is really happy news.
Alright. New business.
2024 license renewals by the Board of Selectmen. Attach are the list of licenses to be renewed by the board for the year 2024. Building and fire departments are recommending approval of the liquor license renewals pending the resolution of outstanding inspection items. The police department has given their approval. It is their rec, it is recommended the board approve the 2024 license renewals as presented pending all paperwork and fees are received.
What are, what are the outstanding inspection items?
Typically, it's like, it's that they may have had a safe, a minor safety issue that need to be corrected for reinspection. We don't have them listed out here, but, you know, they're typically just small follow-up issues. Nothing that would prevent us from.
From getting the license. Okay, oh, you, I have first, you second, people?
Yep.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, with everything but the quarter K, I'm, I'm abstaining from that.
Bill, you missed a couple of them there too.
That was the quarter K, that was the answer.
Next will be for the senior tax work, tax work off request to the increase amount earned. On October 4th, 2023, Governor Healey signed into law H4104, better known as the Tax Relief Bill. This bill allows the Board of Selectmen to approve the tax increase in the senior tax work off program from $1,500 to 2,000. Currently, seniors that are approved for this program can receive up to $1,500 abatement by working 100 hours. The board is being asked to increase the amount from 1,500 to 2,000 and the participants will be required to work 133 hours. Sherri Russell, Council on Aging Director, and Julia Newton, Outreach Coordinator, are here to discuss this request with the board. The Board of Assessors have already approved the increase and would recommend the board approve as well.
Sherri?
Yes.
You want to come up and talk about it a little bit?
So we are very excited about the increase in the hours. I think that the, um, participants can use the extra $500 off their taxes. So we're excited about that. My only concern will be about the hours they have to work, going from 100 to 133. I think we could ask that we have more participation from the town offices to help us, um, achieve this for all the participants.
How could we, how could we help in that situation?
Drop from 133 to 100. I mean, so basically you're going from around $15 an hour to about $20 an hour. I'm, I'm fine with that.
So according to the VMS, uh, yeah, according to the law, we, you know, it's on the condition that it's paid at a minimum wage rate.
Oh, certainly.
Our diff, our difficulty in getting it is finding work. It most likely, because it's, you know, a lot of it is either confidential access or, you know, what is the ability of the person to work now? What is their skill set? So it's kind of hard to marry those two together sometimes. So some people will be over and above in three months. Other people, it's trying to find those hours.
So if I may, if we leave it alone, it's, you know, 1500 status quo. If we increase it to two, based upon the law, if we don't have enough hours or people who can fulfill the hours, it's not like there's a penalty.
Right.
It, I think that if we were to pass it to the two, it just means we have the ability to allow for more hours or for more people as the work allows. As opposed to, you know, it's not like you have to do it or have to use it or force people to. It just gives us more flexibility.
On, on the top of your head, how many, how many seniors do you have in the program right now?
So, um, this year, we had 18 participants. 13 of those completed their hours at the Council on Aging alone. Um, the library took one, the fire department took one. But from my understanding, the fire department, um, they no longer do paper. They're switching over to computers, so they no longer need someone to shred. We had one in conservation, one in finance, one in HR. So I think we would love to go up to 133 hours and allow them to, you know, get the max benefit that they can on their property taxes, especially with them going up. We just want to hopefully do it as a town instead of, we are small down in the senior center, so we're having a hard time finding jobs.
Yeah, absolutely. When was the last time this, this number was ever even talked about being changed? It takes an act of the state legislature, so it's been forever. So 1,500 has probably been there for 10 years, at least.
It was 520, 21. Um, I believe it was changed within the last year or two to 1,500.
Oh, okay, so.
I would motion, I would make a motion to increase it to 2,000.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Absolutely. One quick question on this one, now Sherri. Andrew may know this, I had a question aligned around the maximum income that's used. I think it's what, 200% of, of median? Are we at that or are we below the 200%?
That would have to review, I'm not sure.
Alright, can we take a look at that? Because if we can, if we can bounce up the requirement, if you will. So let's say it's, I'm literally making up a number.
Yeah.
Let's say that you can't earn more than 20,000 to qualify this. Let's see if we can find a way to bump that up to, to, to the maximum allowed, at least for discussion, around the 200% of the median income. And which, which we may be at now, I really don't know. Andrew, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that too.
I do have the numbers, I'm sorry. Um, so if you are single, 35,000 per year, and a couple, up to 50,000. The absolute max is 60,000 per year for additional household members. So the number is a little, I would say, on the higher end. Yeah. We have to look at that.
Yeah, but just take a look at it.
Federal poverty level and compare.
Yeah, like I said, let's just take a look at it, it makes sense. We can have a discussion about it, but it's at least worth looking into. Because anytime something's tied to like CPI or something that, that, that's a variable like this, I get nervous when we don't look at it too often, because sometimes we, I wouldn't say forget about it, but it's one of those, wait a minute, should we make the adjustment now? And the answer may be no, but at least if we have the data, we can just take a quick look. So maybe just at some future meeting.
Okay.
And how are you reaching out to the departments? Just reaching out, you have a senior and you're reaching out to different departments, looking into the needs that it might have?
Yeah, so when I took over outreach coordinator for Mary in May, I had a few people who signed up late, so I send out an email to all department heads, um, just kind of reminding them that we're looking for work. If you have anything ridiculous, tedious things, um, to just please email me and reach out. We can definitely come up with other ways to maybe reach out though, besides the email.
Super.
Cool.
Thank you.
Even though the entire minimum wage thing is ridiculous, but I won't get into that tonight. Yeah, it was probably a year and a half ago, someone reached out to me and for their, for their mom. And then said the paperwork was just too, too intrusive and too much and no one has time to do all that. Is there a, who did they go to to talk to that would be?
It would be Julia.
Yeah, okay. Poor Julia. To help them, to help them navigate through that, yeah.
Yeah, yes, yep. I, um, I run the senior tax work off program, obviously, um, speak with Sherri regarding big decisions. So that's awesome.
Perfect, perfect, cool, perfect.
Alright. Thank you so much ladies.
Thank you both, nice work on this. Yep. Alright, let's start coffee.
Cozy Corner Cafe.
Alright, attaches an application for a common fixture license from Darlene Pilling and Peyton Booth for the Cozy Corner Cafe to be located at 109-2, Masonic Home Road, previously Bellies. They have completed all paperwork our office needs and the recommendation is for the board to approve the request contingent upon Board of Health approval.
You guys, Darlene and Peyton? You want to come up and tell us all about the business?
Now's the time for a cheap plug.
And this is also good for the people to know that, you know, you.
Yeah, and, and, and don't be nervous, this goes townwide, it doesn't go international, so don't be nervous. It's not, it's not a.
No, and people actually are watching it, so we might want to do, you know, I don't know, you know, you do the social media, you might want to take that meeting on and share it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
So tell us. I'm so excited.
Yeah. Sounds good. I don't even need this, whatever I opened it. Okay, so we're basically keeping it the same as Bellies was before, but we're adding a little bit of a twist to it. Just, we're going to do more Italian-based meals than they did there. Eventually, we want to open up one night for dinner to do like pasta and meatball night or chicken broccoli Alfredo night, things like that. And we're going to be adding countless specials every day instead of having. or chicken broccoli Alfredo night, things like that. And we're gonna be adding countless specials every day. Instead of having a huge menu, we're kind of dulling it down a little bit, just so that we can add specials that are unique every week, so that people get to try different things. Um, so as of right now, we're in the process of doing all of that.
And where, what is the first day? What, what is the opening night?
When is the opening? We, we're looking for hopefully, um, the beginning of the year.
The beginning of the year?
Yeah.
That's quite good.
Yeah.
I saw it somewhere, seven to one, was it? Or eight to one?
Seven to one.
Seven to one every day?
Every day.
And weekends?
Yes. Yep, so we're gonna close on Wednesdays though, so we're gonna close on that day and then possibly open for dinner.
Nice.
Down the road.
And are you Charlton residents? You live here in Charlton?
Yes. Yep, I just moved here a year ago.
That's awesome. So you will hear Andrew later. He will be talking about the, uh, new business alliance we have in town for new businesses coming in. You guys should come to that one. Eighth of January, the first month, um, January eighth, I believe, from the top of my head. Andrew will be talking about it. But it'll be very nice to have you because there's other people that would love to hear about it.
Yeah, and it's, um, this is my daughter, so it's a mother-daughter. Yeah. It's a duo.
We'll see.
You got this ladies. You got this ladies. Yes.
Yeah, so I actually have a family member who owns a diner in Worcester. Um, so.
And that's how you came up with that idea?
Yeah.
That's, oh, that's wonderful. If there's anything we can help you with, just reach out.
Thank you so much.
Sure, welcome.
Just a little waffles and chocolate milk mix. Motion to approve the common vic?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
With pleasure. Welcome.
Congratulations, welcome, seriously. Looking forward to coming in.
Appreciate, yeah, thank you.
Uh, we have nothing under old business.
Police review.
Alright, policy review. Attached are the following policies for Board's review with recommended changes, very limited. Um, meeting postings, meeting room use, and taping of meetings for Board committees appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Minutes published for public viewing, and the municipal sign policy. The only recommended change is reducing the turnover of the time on the library side from one minute to thirty seconds.
That's deep.
Yep. So move to approve on all with the amendment on the mu- on the municipal sign policy.
Second.
Or in favor?
Aye.
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 And here's the time to shine. Alright.
You can sing this if you want.
Oh my God, you should. You know, now we're.
I didn't really plan to sing.
Tough crowd every time.
Okay, so we'll start with athletics. Um, the Shepherd Hill Athletics Program created a new website that you can visit to find stats, schedules, and rosters. Anything else related to the athletics program and department, and that is at shepherdhillathletics.com. Additionally, tonight is the boys varsity basketball game. It is their third game. It's at seven PM, and it's home against Saint John's, and they're coming off a two-game win streak. So wish them good luck to keep it going. Um, in the arts, there's a, uh, the band has an upcoming Christmas concert next Thursday in the auditorium at Shepherd Hill. And if you are interested in hearing some holiday pieces, you should attend. Um, and then going into the future, which I know we're excited about, um, Harry Kennan is putting on his play, Tim for Mayor, um, which is going to be played by the Drama Department. Um, more information is to come. But if you are interested, mark the dates in your calendar for January fifth and sixth of twenty twenty-four. Um, school-wide, after the success of selfies with Santa Day last Friday, um, during lunch at Shepherd Hill, where students paid two dollars to take a picture with Santa, the school was able to collect one hundred and fifty dollars donated to families in need. And the administration wanted to take a step further, and this Friday, we are having a pie and admin day. Um, so the vice principals, the officer, Officer Magus, and our principal will all be potential targets of the game. And students can purchase a t- pie for two dollars and try to pie an admin in the face. And the money will be going to charity. So, yeah.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Well then.
Alright.
And, and just a reminder on that, if people don't understand where Tim the mayor is co- is, well, I don't think it's coming from that. Harry was our student select person last year, so he sat through ten meetings with us and cut his ropes on local politics. So I really hope, um, I hope I can identify a couple of you guys out of, out of who he wrote his screenplay for.
Anyone who's angry, yeah, a- a- anyone who's angry and bitter, I'm sure is, 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 is done on me, so.
Oh, I don't think we have some competition with David on this.
The point is, we're gonna have to go, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to go see it. We can talk about it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Very, yeah. It's an interesting plot.
What, do you know, I've, I've completely have a, do you know what time this play is on Saturday?
We were not, I was not given times. I asked him, but.
I asked it because I don't.
It's on Facebook somewhere.
No, I haven't.
Oh, you do have it?
Yeah, Steve, yeah, you actually, yeah, you actually showed it.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, it's like six or seven or something.
Be there.
Oh, it's the six and the seven.
The secretary's usually two. Okay, anything else? What else? Uh, town, uh, report?
Seven PM. You can buy tickets online ahead of time. And it's January fifth or January sixth. There's a discount for students and seniors. I don't know what the age group was for seniors. I didn't see that.
I don't think you qualify.
No.
Okay, guys, moving on.
Maybe, maybe, maybe they meant high school seniors. Maybe that's what.
Andrew.
Alright, alright, I'll try to get through this real quick. So, transfer station. So with the planned closure of the Casella Transfer Station at the end of this month, we're continuing to have conversations with the Town of Spencer to open the use of their transfer facility to Charlton residents. Spencer has indicated some interest in pursuing this further. Uh, some of the advantage for us to potentially joining with Spencer would include access to yard waste disposal, continuation of hazardous waste disposal, and potential of overall cost savings for users. Um, I hope to bring something for consideration to the Board to your January meeting.
Nice job on that. I know it's a pain to kind of find alternatives. That's, that's good.
We'll figure it out. Uh, Route twenty safety improvements. So on December sixth, Dick Peel and I met with representatives from Mass DOT to review their plans for safety improvements to Route twenty from the intersection of Route forty-nine to the scope of the Amazon improvements. The plan which Mass DOT is looking to move forward with includes a full repaving and restriping of the roadway with one eastbound travel lane and two westbound travel lanes with five-foot separation and variable four to seven-foot shoulders. The plan does not include any physical barrier separation between the lanes. We're looking to have Mass DOT conduct plan reviews with our public safety officials and public information sessions prior to any program implementation. The plan for Mass DOT is to implement this program during the spring construction season. And according to Mass DOT's data, this stretch of roadway saw seventy-six crashes over the five-year study period between two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty, ranking it as a top five percent crash location.
That one, that one lane eastbound makes me nervous. Between Amazon, Treehouse, the project that we don't know about, even though everyone knows about it, uh, by Sturbridge. That is gonna be such an awful bottleneck. And I know there's nothing we can do, but I just, if there's anybody we can talk to and say, can we just look at that one more time? Cause I know between the LNG and everything else, there are some safety issues, but that one lane of traffic forever, that's gonna be a disaster.
Can we reach out to them about the potential development of that? You know, the new land, just to put them on.
Yeah.
Physical barrier.
Yep.
But it's one lane going east, going east.
It's gonna be worse.
And, and you're adding, that's before you bet, and, and then you're gonna add Amazon traffic on top of that. Truck traffic who's, who's also going to go east.
Yep.
They're gonna go west.
We hope they go west.
So that, so their traffic study for the west, for the, um, Amazon facility projected that fifty-six percent of their truck, uh, of their traffic would be going westbound, utilizing the two lanes, but coming in is still eastbound.
Yeah.
Still leaves forty-four percent.
Right.
Exactly.
Now, one thing that I did bring up to them is that they need to also have those discussions with, uh, Aberson Sturbridge because their proposed, um, lane reduction would occur about seven hundred feet after the forty-nine intersection, which we know where the bottlenecks are anytime that there's a backup on the Mass Pike is always at our bottleneck down here. So they're essentially looking at shifting that bottleneck.
So.
So the message to everyone who lives in Charlton, if you have to head west, go east to Auburn, be on the Pike in Auburn, then head west.
So are they saying one ba- one-laned east starting at forty-nine?
Correct.
Oh, God. That's gonna be a nightmare.
So.
With the, and that was with dividing it or without dividing it? That was with?
So what?
So they're just not widening the road.
They're not putting in those bollards. They're not putting in a, a, a physical, I'm sorry, physical separation. They're basically saying they're going to have a five-foot width in the middle of the roadway, so that way it's not the six inches that it currently is, that if there's any deviation of coming out of the lane, you're not going into the opposite way of travel. And that's what they're essentially saying is the safety.
And they're taking, they're eating up a lane to do that.
Correct.
What about in front of Treehouses? That, so that's all gonna be modified too?
That is also being brought down to one lane. It'll just be a wider strip of roadway.
Oh, no.
Another brilliant.
How many, how many people deviate from the lane to get around somebody that cause head-ons now?
I, I literally hate this plan. I know it's not your fault. Let me say that. I literally hate this plan.
So, so when they, when they make a five-foot one, is it like what they did in, in Auburn, like in front of Ronnie's, like, like? It's not just five feet. It's, it's, it's granite curb and then brick or something? There's, there's something you can't just hop over without.
No, their proposal was not physical separation. It was only rubble strips.
Okay.
I'm still waiting for them to actually forward me the, the plans to share with you guys. That way you guys can see it. It's obviously just me describing it is different than seeing it on paper. Um, but again, I know.
Hopefully they come.
You haven't seen these plans either, so that's why I said there needs to be more follow-up conversation about this, especially with public safety.
Yeah, sounds.
Hopefully they come to their senses, but I'm not planning on it.
Can we put them on the, on the notice that there's potentially somebody coming in on that new development?
I, that was, that was explicitly discussed with them and what their plans were. You know, they, those all need the Mass DOT's approval in order to even get their driveway access. And that was essentially where they said, from where they know Amazon's doing their improvements out to forty-nine, because they've already communicated what their expectations are for the Amazon.
Okay. Good update though. I'm glad people, yeah.
I said it would be shocking.
Yeah, Andrew, keep us posted on this one. And if we can get them in front of us, someone from Mass DOT.
I will make that recommendation.
They can say no.
They have a tight timeline here, you know, where essentially they're talking about the spring construction season. I think that they were, their initial hope was one meeting with me and the Highway Super, and that was it. We're good to go.
It's not the case.
No.
So, we got three years going out to Oxford. We're gonna have enormous changes going out to Sturbridge. And in the meantime, LNG's live, Amazon will be live, and we'll have the other potential issue down in Sturbridge. Yep. Oh, yeah, like I said, this has success written over it.
Work from home people.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'll stop venting now. I just hate.
No, yeah, I think we all, I think we're all.
It's all good. The price they're gonna pay.
So also on December sixth, the, uh, Fire Substation Building Committee met with, uh, Context Architecture to begin the process of schematic design and design development for the fire station project. The committee also evaluated proposals for the owners' project managers' submittals. Committee will be interviewing a shortlist of applicants this week with the goal of selecting a firm immediately after. Uh, during that meeting, we also met with some butters to the project to address some concerns that they had relative to setback and buffering. Uh, we'll look forward to keeping this on track in consideration, uh, for the full project, uh, in the spring, so.
Who is on this committee? You, David? Bill?
I, S- Steve's the voting member. I'm an alternate when he can't make it.
Uh-huh. So you guys gonna be at those meetings, at those, uh, uh?
On the fourteenth, I can't go, but I believe Steve will be there.
Oh, it's four thirty, five thirty, six thirty, right, right.
Steve will definitely be there.
Oh, you'll be, you're gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright. Uh, Charlton Business Alliance. I want to acknowledge the work of Matt Power and Kara Holland in organizing the Charlton Business Alliance as an organized group to advocate for the needs of Charlton businesses. They held their first meeting on December fourth with about twenty businesses, uh, represented at that meeting. Because most businesses in Charlton are home-based business, we discussed some of the struggles that they see in en- in engaging with a local customer base. Uh, one action item that we'll be pursuing is to host a local business fair in conjunction with our town meeting in the spring by hosting local vendor booths in front of the middle school prior to the meeting, hoping that by bringing these two resources together, we're able to provide an audience for many of our local vendors while also maybe driving some additional engagement for town meeting itself. And so if you know of any local businesses who may be interested in joining the business alliance, their next meeting is Ju- January eighth at six thirty in the Charlton Library Community Room.
Good idea.
The Senior Center RFP, we compiled, compiled a, uh, the draft for the RFP authorized by the Board last month to consider leased space for this, for a senior center. The draft is currently being reviewed by legal counsel, but we hope to have this released by the end of the month. Um, with the budget season for FY twenty-five about to begin in earnest, I'd like to schedule some non-televise working meetings with the Board to accomplish a few things, to conduct some onsite tours of municipal facilities, to meet with department heads, and try to set, set some goals and objectives for us to accomplish over the next year and plan for in the budget cycle. Ideally, uh, this be done the week of January eighth, just so I can accomplish this prior to the release of the Governor's Budget the following weeks. Uh, but again, based off your availability.
I love your optimism about the Governor of the Budget being ready.
Fingers crossed. And then finally, I just want to acknowledge the efforts of everybody involved in the parade of lights and Christmas tree lighting last Monday. Uh, despite the one-day weather delay, the event saw a massive turnout for the community, and I also like to thank the volunteers who take the time every year to dedi- to decorate the common for the holiday season, and really is an example of the pride and dedication that our citizens have for the community, so thank you.
Cool.
That's good. And thank you to the fire station, right, for supervising and organizing it at the, the committee, so thank you for that.
Thank you, God Harris.
For the, yeah, and for the January eighth thing, that's, that's reasonably, that's, that's a good idea. I like the idea.
Yeah, we'll, we'll workshop that more with them and figure out logistics, but you know, it's a good starting point.
Yeah, Steve was there too.
You know, if it's not all, if it's not four or five in one day, but, you know, it could be.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
We'll figure it out.
One or two.
Um, I just have two things, if you guys don't mind, just to remind everybody that this, this coming Saturday for our local charity is a Chippens Day, so from nine to twelve in a food pantry, we have, um, we have a food and we have toys. Uh, it's encouraged for people to register, you know, ahead of time, and you can do it through the town, find Mary or Darlene. Uh, but anybody's welcome, so from nine to twelve in the Chippens behind of the town hall. Um, and from me personally, my family, I just wanna wish everybody a happy holidays and a happy new year.
I'm not sure if I have any, Andrew, just one request on the go-bags.
Mm-hmm.
Can we get something on the website?
Sure.
And would you be so kind as to maybe just put it on email to the department heads to see if maybe any departments as a whole would like to create like a PD or IR department or a library or a town hall bag? If they wanna, if they wanna contribute bags.
And it, it just turned the old Worcester RMV into a shelter today.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
Really? I had no idea.
Yep.
Yep, that's good. Alright, let's do it. Uh, next meeting announcement, January ninth. And that's it.
Ma'am Charlton, I'd like to make the motion to go into executive session under MGL, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the police union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declare it.
Roll, uh, roll call on this one?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, aye.
Aye.
Cool. Thanks, Drew. Thanks, Brad.